How y'all doing? Good afternoon, how y'all doing? That's what I'm talking about, to bring some energy in this thing. All right, welcome to the Griffin Spalding County Board of Education Public Hearing Number Three, as it relates to House Bill 581. Now we'll go to the adoption of the agenda, what is the pleasure of this body? It's been properly moved by Ms. McDonald to adopt the agenda, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Weldon, all in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Five zero, the agenda is adopted. All right, item number three, public hearing number three, House Bill 581, Mr. Moneybag Yo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening Board Members and Community. This is our third public hearing, which is a requirement by law for House Bill 581. This is a tax legislation that went into effect on January first, so I did pare down the presentation by about five or six more slides, since we're on version three. So I'll give you a few little quick updates here on this one. So, we always remind you each year, this is third year, or year number three of Roadmap to Success, Leadership Teaching and Learning. We normally read this from the bottom up, student achievement still is our ultimate goal with any dollar that we spend here in Griffin Spalding. A little bit of background information, as I said, January first, we are officially opted in right now unless you as a board choose to opt out of this legislation. It is a statewide homestead exemption, so it affects every county in the state. It basically caps the annual increase of a homeowner's, homesteaded homeowner's property tax assessment, I'll show you example of that in just a minute. Board of Education can opt out of this legislation, you gotta do basically three steps, which is public input, which is this is the third hearing, do some advertisements, which we've showed you multiple times on some Saturday newspapers here in Griffin, put it on our website, issue a press release, etc. Then there's a board resolution that has to be delivered to the Secretary of State. This again is a one-time opt-out discussion, I probably need a little bit of clarity from last time's meeting. You're opted in, the only choice you have, that's a one-time situation, is the opt-out. If you opt in and then in future years want to opt out, that will not be allowed. So if you opt out, I believe you can opt in later, or you can do other tax relief if it's your purview later, but the opt-out is what's required by March first. As we said before, it is true, if you opt in, homeowners could see a reduction in taxes on the face of the property tax bill, as I remind you, about two-thirds of any property tax bill in Georgia is related to school taxes. Millage rate would need to be looked at, sixteen point seven four two here in Griffin Spalding, probably five years in a row, the bay of mills about two point five million. Millage rates are capped at twenty, did show you some examples the last few years of a few counties around us within probably a hundred and fifty miles that are above twenty, but you have to get your legislature folks involved to do that, get that approved. And property taxes again are essential for sustainability of ongoing operations, as a reminder, the student enrollment's what drives about sixty to sixty-five million of our revenue here in Griffin Spalding, forty million or so is from property taxes. So if you add those two together, it is true that the property taxes are essential for our sustainability. A few little pros and cons on the opt-in side, homeowner property tax relief, I mean it was voted in successfully pretty much every county in the state, in the sixty to seventy to fifty, fifty-five percent range is how it passed. It was voted on by the citizens, it limits inflationary increases on homesteaded property, it's about seventy-six hundred and ninety-two properties here in Spalding, and that is subject to the Consumer Price Index, which is, which is an annual publication that the state would put that out. So that's what your growth would be limited on for taxation. The cons, it could limit your decision-making authority a little bit, and I mean that from the amount of revenue, you could have the ability to make that decision up to twenty. You know, it could affect what you're used to doing as far as discretionary decisions with the Board of Education. Your expense inflation could outpace the inflation of CPI. I've told you before, if you get a student enrollment increase in the fall, you're not going to get the revenue for that for another year, so you're pretty well locked in on your revenue for the current year. Now if you go down in the current year and you've already gotten your revenue, you also held harmless, so I, you know, tell both sides of the coin on that, but you do get that in the next year in arrears, if you have an increase. You cannot reverse the decision to opt out, you can always opt in. Long-term financial health, I think I've said this before, the county has a few more options, they can have an option of an additional sales tax, and I don't believe they have a limit on their millage rate. So again, we're capped at twenty mills. This graph is something that most of the counties have put out something similar to this in the state, it's about a nine million dollar impact if we would have had House Bill 581 back in the two thousand and nineteen range per year, and you can see the most recent year, that figure would have been about a four point one percent growth, or would have been held to that. So again, do you think that inflation in a lot of situations outpaced four point one? Gas tax, etc., there's a lot of things where we could point to that we think that's been higher than four. This was an example, and again, I want you to point you to the third item. So the third item on the opt-in property value, if you had a hundred thousand dollar house, your tax bill at sixteen point seven four two would have been about six hundred and seventy dollars. Over to the right at a four point one percent, so this is under the new way of doing it, your property value for taxes would have been a hundred and four thousand one hundred on the value, you would have had about a thirty dollar increase for the year from six sixty-nine to six ninety-seven, and that's just some simple math, there might be a nuance to that, but that's just the easiest way to compare that. If you go to the normal way that you're used to, and if you had sales of comparable property in the county, etc., and you had explosive growth, etc., and you were going to be at a hundred thousand, and you went to a hundred and thirty thousand, then obviously your tax bill would have gone from about six seventy to eight seventy. So that's, that's what the normal assessment process here in Spalding County and the other ones in the state has been used to. Few items to consider, we're getting ready to talk about budgets again, the visioning of the budget, what does it look like this year, but what does it really look like two, three years, superintendent's vision, all that kind of stuff that we would want to lay out for a future year of a roadmap to success, that could be limited on some of the, on some of the revenue side, obviously budget shortfalls can come in a lot of different ways. The mandatory salary and benefit increases, we don't know that from year to year, I haven't heard anything this year about a salary increase for certified from the state, but we have heard about the benefit increases from the state, which I'll talk about that at our next meeting. School improvement, the recruitment and retention, we've talked about our Griffin Spalding initiative to keep employees here in Griffin Spalding or reward them for loyal service, that could have a compromise situation there. Future legislative sessions, if the legislature was to change anything, which we've heard that being talked about for even House Bill 581. Enrollment, again, we do need to increase that, what can we do to increase that in this environment? Ongoing risks with a one-time decision, which is everything we just talked about, and then like I said, most of the school system in Georgia, we looked at a chart, about, I'd say about eighty-five percent of them are at least telling us they're going to opt out, and whether they will or not, I don't know, but they're in the process of having their public hearings. So here's our five-year digest, this is all public information over to the bottom right, third line from the bottom, about forty-two million dollars in taxes is what we're getting from the property tax side. The only exceptions to that is the fee, we pay the county about two and a half percent of that of what's collected, and then if we have uncollectibles, or there's a payment plan, they pay in a subsequent year, so that might would compromise that just a little bit. Here's your ten-year millage rate data, sixteen point seven four two, you can go to twenty. Again, it was, at some point prior to me, it was at nineteen point something back in the two thousand and ten, eleven, twelve range, so the board has at some point been up there at the cap. Timeline, I revised this a little bit, so I've taken off a few things on this, but we're here on February eleventh, this will complete our compliance process. If this board chooses to opt out, Superintendent and I will need to deliver a resolution to the state, we have a copy of that resolution, draft resolution, we'll just have to insert some data, that has to be received by March twenty, excuse me, by March first. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jones, for the presentation, and this time we're going to go ahead and go to public comments. We have one person who has signed up for public comments, before you come, let me read to you, policy, B C B I, Guidelines for Public Comments. Any individual desiring to speak is requested to give his or her name, address, and the group if any, that he or she is presenting. Speaker is expected to address the board, not the audience. The presentation should be as brief as possible, yet should include all information considered important by the speaker. Unless an extension of time is granted, each speaker shall not exceed three minutes. Questions, suggestions, proposals, or criticisms that have been presented... All right, questions, suggestions, proposals, criticisms that have been presented verbally should be also submitted in practical and writing, and should be signed by the individual or the spokesperson of the group appearing before the board. Persons appearing before the board are reminded as a point of information that members of the board are not without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Board members will not give remarks or provide comments from speakers. Board members will not give remarks or provide comments from speakers. The board chair, presiding officer, will refer speakers to the superintendent and district staff as necessary for further resolution. No profane or vulgar language or personal abuse against any person will be permitted. This time we'll move to Mr. Timothy Poole for public comments, thank you, sir.
All right, good evening, my name is Timothy Poole, I live at one one zero eight Sage Drive from District Two. Homeowner, taxpayer, private educator, licensed engineer, small business owner, community leader, husband and a father, and I'm furious. I'm not mad at any particular person, just as a voter and a taxpayer. We're in a really precarious time right now, we're in the middle of a revolution, a financial revolution, and this not hyperbole, this is eventually going to touch every level of government spending, one way or another, and it's kind of a fascinating snapshot of history that we're in, seeing all the major things happening, I guess in our government on a federal level, with exposing and eliminating wasteful spending. House Bill 581, also known as Save Our Homes, I've done a lot of research on it, it's kind of another one of those type overhauls. Citizens of Georgia voted to ratify this amendment, and now it comes here to be adopted at the local government level. To opt out, I feel like would be to blatantly ignore the will of the people, I don't think that's acceptable. Most of us know what this is and why we want it, the bill doesn't reduce our current level of funding, but it's a cap on the CPI rate for future tax hikes, and so that limits our local government and prevents homeowners, their assessments from being outpaced from their wage growth, and so that's something that we can't necessarily control, is our wage growth. The majority of Spalding County voters voted for this, over sixty percent, all twenty-one voting precincts in Spalding County voted yes for this, which was kind of shocking, so across the board, all precincts wanted to pass this, 581. And just from the perspective of servant leadership, it's embodied by working alongside your federal citizens and putting the will of your constituents above your own, and so tonight I just ask that you would honor the will and consideration of your constituents, and that's part of your oath of office, and please don't opt out of House Bill 581, and if you do nothing, it'll self-ratify, and so, you know, like I said, we're kind of in the middle of a, you know, major financial revolution, and, you know, tonight, we kind of pick sides, you know, are you going to side with the citizen voters that you represent, or are you going to further continue in the way we've been doing things, which has kind of turned into out-of-control spending machine, and so, I just think that we've got a chance to do something about that, and I think it will be a great step for the board, for their constituents, to consider that, and, yeah, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, Mr. Poole. All right, we are, don't have any, we don't have executive session, looking to adjourn? Okay, you have to sign up. Okay, no problem, come on up here for me, sir, please. No problem, we'll get you, we'll get you taken care of right here. All right, we have Mr. Randolph Hamilton, who has public comments for House Bill 581.
Short but sweet, but start out, I live in Spalding County, unincorporated Spalding County, and what I wanted to say is in the last four years, my house value has increased by eighty-one percent. That's by sheer numbers, that's more, more that goes to the county. A little nervous, excuse me. But the value of my house did not translate to anything in my pocket, so, Social Security, I'm retired, Social Security hasn't increased eighty-two percent. And like the gentleman before stated, Georgia voted for this bill, Spalding County voted for this bill, you got people out there that think their vote doesn't count, so this was just increases that attitude that, but they voted, it doesn't matter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hamilton. All right, so no executive session, and we are ready for adjournment. Is there, what's the pleasure of this body?
A second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Five zero, public hearing is adjourned. We're going to move right into our work session, today is February the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, this meeting is now called to order, please place all electronic communication devices on silent or vibrate. Roll call, when your name is, when your district is called, please respond with present. District one, present, district two?
Present.
District three?
Present.
District four?
Present.
District five, we have a quorum. Now we'll have our prayer and pledge allegiance, our prayer will be led by Leader Holmes, and our pledge will be led by Ms. Weldon.
Ahead bow humbleness in our hearts. Father God, we ask that you lead, guide, and direct us as we execute the business of the constituents of Spalding County. Let us make decisions that would be good for our scholars, our employees, and everyone concerned, and Lord God, we ask these things, knowing that you can and you will lead us in the right directions. It's in Jesus' name we do pray, amen.
Moving on to item four, the adoption of the agenda, what is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the adoption of the work session agenda?
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Register of the second?
Second.
Seconded by Leader Holmes of the third, all those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Agenda is adopted, five zero. All righty. Consent agenda, what is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Leader Holmes of the third. Seconded by Ms. McDonald of the fifth, all those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Five zero, consent agenda is approved. All right, action items, next up, bids, contract approval for new transportation facility. Mr. Bruce Bobb, the builder ballot.
Good afternoon, Chairman Brown, Board Members, and Dr. Simmons, here today for an exciting project to present to you for approval to move forward on. Over the last number of months, Mr. Martin and myself have worked along with the architect and engineers to put together what we believe is a very nice transportation facility for them. They have had some challenges over there, as most of you know, at the bus shop. When we originally started off with this plan back when Splash Six came up, we were looking at just replacing the bus shop proper, and after going through and kind of working through things, we looked at possibly going ahead and making it a complete transportation facility, which is what we have now done, and so we've looked at a couple of options here with the financing and funding of this from Splash, two options from Splash Six that we considered, one was we had originally considered two point seven million in there for the actual bus shop, and then additionally, there was a little over two point eight million for buses. Well, fortunately, we had additional funds in Splash Five that has been able to use for bus purchases, and we were also able to put more money in Splash Seven for bus purchases, so that has allowed us a little leeway to utilize that money that was in Splash Six for buses for the transportation facility. In addition to that, we were moving along with the design and some of the efforts when Splash Seven came along, and we knew that we would not be able to quite do everything we were hoping to do with the amount we had, so we included another four million dollars in Splash Seven to cover those costs. With that, I'm thankful to say that right now we feel comfortable with where we stand. We had come up and worked with the architects and engineers and the estimates that we had put together and came up with roughly eight million dollars for a contract price for this. We knew that there would be, we had some other work to do for the efforts, which was like refurbishing the existing parking area, as well as demolition of the old bus shop, so some of those items along with that and some other things we actually put in as alternates because we were a little concerned that we might extend beyond what we, actually we had budgeted. But fortunately, we are in a position with what we have, if you look at those numbers that I gave you earlier, it, that amounts to nine million, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars, which would basically cover all of our needs, but currently as we move forward at this time, we do think that it is advantageous to keep some contingency funds there. You know, we have done soil borings and the other things that we have to do before we go in to put in a building, but there can still be unknowns, and so until we get beyond that and kind of start moving forward with the actual construction of this site, we feel that it would be best to keep contingency there, but fortunately with the way we have it, the alternates put in there, as soon as we get beyond that point and we feel comfortable that we don't need those contingency funds, then we can move right on over to that alternate and continue with the, with the work efforts that are there. So, and just for, for your knowledge also, because we do have new board members on board here, we did want you to know that the, the plan is, you know, is to put this new transportation facility between where it currently is and the Oars Elementary Site. We have a large grass field there, and we wanted to, we needed the additional parking that we had with our, currently, in addition to what we're putting in, but also we have the fueling station for the buses already there, so it just made sense to utilize that and continue to utilize that. So we did do that. One other thing for those of the new board members that may not be aware, we have typically in our district used a design bid-build scenario for construction, we have not ventured out except unless we were doing smaller projects in-house for construction management that we did in-house, but have not done any construction management at risk or those things per se. So this project was done in the same way that we have normally done school projects, which is design bid-build, and we feel that that gives us a good opportunity and gives us good pricing. With this, we did have six contractors that actually turned in bids on this project, that is the most we've had in a number of our bids, because usually with our renovation efforts, those are, it's a little more difficult to work through and do work when school's going on and work on holidays and stuff, and so a lot of contractors just don't want to try that. But with this case where it's new construction, we were able to attract a few, few more contractors, so we did have six bids, they were very close bids, which makes us feel good that we had good plans and good data for them to work off of, and it makes me feel better that I don't think we'll have to be worrying too much about some of that contingency fund. But with that being said, what we would, would like to move forward tonight and, and recommend that the Griffin Spalding County Board of Education approve a not-to-exceed amount of eight million dollars for the lowest overall base bid and needed alternates as submitted by Bowen and Watson Construction for the new transportation facility.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have heard the presentation from Mr. Ballard on the bid and contract approval for the new transportation facility, are there any questions for Mr. Ballard at this time? Leader Holmes, you're recognized, then Ms. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Ballard, knowing that we're going to kind of keep the fueling station site where it is, what, what kind of modification are we including, or they including, in doing this construction?
So, we'll have, again, we still will have also that parking area and the drives that are currently there now.
Right.
We will build a new facility before, of course, we tear down the old facility. There will be a connector, we'll say a bridge, it's a, it's a modified bridge culvert type thing that goes over the little drainage ditch that's currently to the north of the bus shop as it is. And then it will be connected up a drive there to connect up to the new bus station, where you have access between the two parking lots and the areas around the facilities.
Okay, so, so, so that fueling station will be upgraded, and that, that?
The access to it and stuff.
Bridge and all that is included?
Well, that's part of the alternates, as long as everything works out with the, you know, the contingency, but we have to keep that open because the other thing, that was part of the plan, not only do we have to have access to the fueling station, but of course our cooler freezer and nutrition warehouse is out there, so we have to maintain access to that.
Right.
Throughout the whole design, so even when we're doing that work, that we'll hopefully be doing there, we still have to maintain access, and we had already planned different phasing of the work to allow for that.
Okay, okay, that's what I was concerned about, okay, sir, thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This is, hey, Mr. Ballard, I just think this is a great day, when I first got on the board with Mr. Smith here as superintendent, we talked about this six years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I just applaud your work and your efforts and your diligence to get this to the, not only to the drawing board, but when will we break ground?
Well, if we go ahead and get this approval, we'll be moving forward with getting the contracts put into place, and I'm hoping within the next couple of months, we should be able to... And I'm hoping within the next couple of months, we should be able to go ahead and break ground and start moving forward out there.
That's great. Thank you so much. And a lot of people here don't even realize how dangerous our current facility is. That's a true statement for our mechanics, for our drivers, for our employees, because it was built in, what year, 18 something probably?
It was not quite that old.
I'm just kidding, 19?
It was around the 40s. But it, the thing is, I mean, as far as safety concerns, that part is not too bad. But it's just the, the actual working environment. The metal building there is starting to deteriorate quite badly. When there's heavy rains, water does flow through the bus shop. So the mechanics are actually working and run off rainwater. So yeah, that's a little rough there.
The timeframe for completion would be, what, a couple of years, I guess?
Just a little over a year.
Just a little over a year? That's awesome. And the only other question I had was back on the last bullet about the, please note the initial contract value does not include refurbishing the existing parking lot fencing. How much do you think all that will cost?
Well, that refurbishing that parking lot is a little over a million dollars itself. Yeah, so, but again, with the contingency funds we have there, we're feeling pretty good as long as we don't have to tap into those. But there are other things and that's why we still want to be cautious and we still move along with looking at the priorities. Mr. Martin and myself have talked about, you know, there will have to be some prioritization. There might be a few little things, you know, that we have to wait on or something. But, you know, there's other things there like, we do have to, and I will probably be bringing that to the next meeting. When you build a new building, we have to have geotechnical consultants and engineers out there to do work for soil compaction, for concrete testing, different things like that, that we normally don't have on a renovation where we're not doing that type of work. So that costs money as well as the site lighting. That's something that we work with the City of Griffin Power Company to take care of. So, you know, there's those costs and a few other things that we, that are further down the line that we still have to work through. So we just want to make sure we can get the best product we can. And that's what he and I have talked about. You know, we want to make sure that we get proper lifts, you know, other distribution systems and products that they need in there that really are important when you're doing the, the actual construction work. And, you know, then there could be some other things that are, you can kind of just equipment or parts and pieces you can just add on easily or buy and it's just a standalone that we may have to consider down the road.
I just applaud you and your staff and Mr. Martin and his staff. Thank you so much for working so diligently on this product. And I'm just thrilled that we're going to finally break ground. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, are there any other questions from any board members about this particular agenda item? Alright, alright, so what is the pleasure of this body as it relates to bidding and contract approval for the new transportation facility?
Vote to approve.
Alright, it has been properly moved by Ms. McDonald of the fifth and seconded by Ms. Register of the second. When your district is called, please vote. District one, yes. District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Approved. Alright, next up, presentations and discussions. Elementary swim initiative, Ms. Kimberly Register. So, Ms. Register, you know, this is your first item. This is like your second meeting, third meeting, and your first item. So it's going to be a little rough when it comes to questions. I just want you to know that.
Okay.
Alright.
I'm ready. I got this. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here this evening. So this is my first of probably many, if you know me, initiative. But I wanted to kind of bring something to, to the attention of the board and our constituents and see if we could get something started here in Spalding County. As many of you are aware, we have a new aquatic center here in Spalding County, so I would like to utilize it, if possible, to create and bring some sort of swim safety courses to our elementary age students here in our county. So many of you might have seen floating around on social media that Houston County Schools initiated something like this, very successfully implemented this program to teach essential water safety skills to their elementary age population in their county. And so we have the opportunity to do the same here in our county by leveraging the new beautiful aquatic center that we have to afford swim events for our elementary age students and of course, swim safety. So why does this matter? If you look on at the data, drowning is the leading cause of unintentional injury and death among our children. In the United States alone, more children die from drowning accidents in the elementary ages than any other cause of death. So I think it's imperative that we do something here in our community to help alleviate that. So early introduction to swimming. So we want to teach swim safety skills at young ages because this builds confidence, of course, and improves water safety awareness. How do we propose to do it? A countywide initiative that hopefully can bring together schools, local businesses, community organizations, et cetera, to support this initiative. How are we going to carry this out? We do have high school swim teams. They do have off seasons and maybe they could serve as volunteer coaches with the right supervision so they can provide mentorship that gives them leadership opportunities as well. So that's kind of how I'd like to structure this, of course, with working with, you know, other professionals. I'd like to offer structured swim lessons, maybe on the evenings, weekends, making it accessible to all students. The American Red Cross has free swim safety curriculum that provides a very standardized approach to this. And like I said before, utilize our coaches and swim teams. I'd like to partner with local businesses, organizations to support maybe the funding of this, although I think that we can probably do this rather resourcefully. What else? We can explore grants, sponsorships, community support, you know, with this. And I just think it's a great use of our aquatic center to ensure the safety of our children here in Spalding County. So I'm open to questions.
Awesome. So the gentle lady has yielded for questions. Is it up for discussion? Anybody have questions for Ms. Register? Okay, go ahead. Wait, whoa, 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 Ms. Register.
Okay, I just said yes.
We're going to get it together. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Register. I wanted to, I think I've let you know in passing, but I wanted to publicly let you know that a neighbor in Sun City, Mo, I don't, can't even pronounce his last name, did this himself when he and his wife lived in New Jersey. So he would be a great asset to, for you all to get together and speak and talk and plan and do because he has, he has done this in his own previous neighborhoods. So I just wanted to shout out to Mo. His last name starts with a P, but it's about that long.
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome. So Ms. Register, my question is, have you thought about what the financial responsibility with fiscal note for this particular program would be?
So I actually did reach out to Houston County and their school board, and they have welcomed us to come to their facilities to see how they run their program. I think they call it Dolphin Tales. I think that that's the name of it. But they said that they had a large community support. Their biggest issue were transportation costs and then, of course, swimsuits for the children. But they did mention that some local organizations donated the swimsuits. So they, they told me their biggest struggle was transportation costs. So that would be something that we'd have to work out.
Also, do you know if the Board of Education has allocated any money in their budget for this particular program?
I do not know that.
Okay. So in our next follow-up, those are some of the questions that we would want to know. This, and this is something that will happen after school? Okay?
That's correct, yes.
Alright, and what are your, what are your hours that you're thinking about this being structured?
You know, I think that we probably need to probably talk to some of the community members to see what hours work best for them. Because, you know, I know parents are, you know, of course, working. So either after hours on weekends, you know, something that works for, you know, the good of the community.
That's good, that's good. Alright, I have no further questions. Anybody else have any questions for Ms. Register? Let's give Ms. Register her hand. This is her first thing that she's brought to the board. Want to say thank you for your leadership. And I have paired you to work with Leader Holmes. Leader Holmes is a great advocate of sports and sits on the Spalding County Parts and Recreation Advisory Board. And as he put in the email, working with Spalding County and their staff. And then also, I would like to see Superintendent, if Mr. Stikes would be able to provide some assistance with this as well, being that it is dealing with the school district. And so I think after, let's shoot for March, April, let's shoot for May, Board, that we can put this up back on the agenda for more discussion and to see the plans. Also, Ms. Register, if you could coordinate and organize us going down to Houston County, get with Dr. Simmons and Mrs. Ray on, on that and so that we can go down and see the great things that they're doing and how it could be benefited here in Griffin Spalding. Alright, awesome. Thank you so much. Our next item on the presentations and discussion would be Let Us Make Man. Mr. Kenyatta Bush, it has an emergency and will not be able to be here. But just a little bit about the program. It is a program geared for scholarships for our high school students, scholars. Previously, they have awarded at Griffin High and Spalding High School, but they went on a little hiatus for a little minute. And so they wanted to just bring this back to the community. I think at some point, Dr. Purit, were you able to talk with Pastor Bush? Okay. And so they've been communicating. We were able to get the information over to the school, so everything is rolling. I just wanted, in an effort of transparency, wanted to bring Mr. Bush here to talk to the board about it and see how they are helping and doing their part here in Spalding County. And so we will try to get him rescheduled for March, if he can, just to provide a physical update. Alrighty, next on the agenda is our cell phone resolution. Mr. Pew, will you read the resolution, please?
Resolution of the Griffin Spalding County Board of Education, directing the superintendent to develop a policy based on stakeholder engagement and collected data and for other purposes. Whereas the Griffin Spalding County Board of Education is committed to fostering an inclusive and responsive educational environment that reflects the needs and perspectives of all stakeholders and whereas the board has actively engaged scholars, parents, and employees of the Griffin Spalding County School System, GSCS, in meaningful discussions through town hall meetings and thought exchange to collect valuable data and diverse perspectives. And whereas, the data collected from these engagement efforts represents a wide range of opinions and insights, ensuring that the development of a policy is both informed and reflective of the needs of our community. And whereas, the board recognizes the importance of creating the best possible policy to support the success and well-being of all GSCS students and staff. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Griffin Spalding Board of Education hereby directs the superintendent to initiate the process of developing, updating, and/or amending the current policy, ensuring that it aligns with the data collected and the input received from scholars, parents, and employees. And be it further resolved that the superintendent shall keep the board informed of progress and provide opportunities for continued stakeholder engagement throughout the policy development process.
Alright, thank you so much. At this time, Dr. Simmons is going to update our new board members. So we, this was brought to us last year. Mr. Holmes brought it to us and superintendent was able to have host town hall meetings, thought exchange to get the opinions of our public. And so we have made it known that before we do anything, we want to make sure that we have the input of our scholars, parents, staff members and all as we do this work. And so a lot of work has gone into this. So as you see, it was done on November 12th, and he's just going to provide us a refresher and something new for our new board members. And then, Mr. Holmes, if you want to add anything to that, being that you brought this to the board, you're more than welcome to. Dr. Simmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So for those of you who've seen the presentation, please bear with me for our new board members, Mrs. Register, Mrs. Weldon. I will try and speak quickly and highlight some of the components that were mentioned in the resolution. I'll forego our non-negotiables and focused area, although it pains me because I normally wouldn't do that. But in the interest of time, I'll forego those things. So what I want to do is get to the backdrop, as Chairman Brown indicated. We, there was some discussion earlier on, roughly a year and a half ago. Momentum and the such began to gain and made its way here in Griffin Spalding County. Mr. Holmes brought it up. We talked about it in a retreat. These were just some examples of headlines in our regional, you know, notifications and the such. So more of those, I forgot that I put all this fancy stuff in here, so I apologize for all of that. But this right here is actually a photo of a journalism broadcast in Montgomery Public Schools in Alabama, mostly highlighting two things, what's known as a yonder pouch, which is an example of how to manage cell phones, but also the implications of a cell phone restriction in the school system. So as it was mentioned in the resolution, we did have a town hall. If I'm speaking honestly, the town hall participation wasn't what we were hoping for. So we then followed that up with a thought exchange. And there's a little bit more about that. I think you're familiar with our use of thought exchange to amplify perspectives and voice. So this, this really highlights the level of participation. As you can see there, roughly 1,500 participants shared nearly 1,200 thoughts, and those thoughts were rated nearly 17,000 times. The way that I present that to you is it would almost be as if though every time someone gave a perspective, such as in the public hearing, you had seven, nearly 17,000 comments about said perspective. So that gives you some insight into the amount of participation and feedback that we received in the thought exchange. So these are the two highlights, as I've already gone over those. I've already talked about the level of the ratings. Many believe cell phones are a significant distraction and that, you know, that was the voice of not only students, parents, but staff as well. Others argue the necessity of cell phones for safety and emergency communication, and that was amplified and manifested itself even in Montgomery Public Schools in that journalism broadcast. Suggestions for clear rules and consistent enforcement, those were the things that were spoken about here in Griffin Spalding, which led to the solicitation from the board to gain support relative to a policy. Because what we were currently doing is we have certain schools that are trying to do things the way, as best it could, relative to, you know, regulating the use and the possession of cell phones in schools. Other schools decided that was a fight or a battle that they were not interested in. And as long as, you know, students, you know, were not causing harm with the cell phone, then the students, then the schools didn't necessarily pursue other avenues in that regard. These are the themes, the various themes that were discussed by the participants. So you could see anything from bullying all the way down to social interaction, responsible usage, technology access, school safety. So these are the various themes that were referenced within the thought exchange. These are the top five thoughts. I'll share this with you, board members, so that you can read this for yourself. If you really want to get deep into it, I can make it to where you can see all 17,000. Not sure if you want to go that far, but these are the top five. And you can have, you can begin to see overall what the common thread is in that regard. Just a few more seconds to take a look at that. So there were some questions that we included in the thought exchange, similar to a survey. The first question, which of the following roles best describes those who are participating in the exchange? As you can see, the vast majority of the participants considered parents or guardians. Next behind that group were students and then our staff. These are the schools that were associated with the participants. These are the grade levels that were associated with the participants. As you can see and as you would expect, the older the student, the more participation. How often does your child bring a cell phone to school? As you can see, nearly 1,000 of the participants indicated that a child brings a school, I mean, child brings a cell phone to school on an everyday basis. How do you feel about cell phone use during school hours as it relates to teaching and learning? Surprisingly, half of the individuals who participated indicated a negative impact. 20% indicated positive, 30% indicated no impact. So evenly split if you included all of the participants and their perspectives. Has your student ever been harassed or bullied through a cell? Has your student ever been harassed or bullied through a cellphone? What's the primary concern regarding cellphone use during school hours? We gave participants up to two selections there. Primary concern overwhelmingly is that it's such a, it's a distraction from learning. Most common reasons, as you can see there, why do students need a cellphone, much as it was indicated in the, the, uh, thought exchange proper, and again, be reminded that this thought exchange, uh, was launched, uh, in close proximity to, um, the events at Appalachia High School. So, so there were some real and true feelings about the need to be able to communicate with parents, uh, and, and, and that's a valid issue. So if cellphones were to be allowed, when should they be allowed? This is where the work is, uh, what you see here are the common threads as well as the opposing threads. So, side A, distraction from learning, side B, emergency communication, and in the middle, being able to control how cellphones are used. Those will be the, um, pressure points, if you would, as it relates to policy development, as it relates to, uh, regulating the use of cellphones in schools, to what extent can we do so and still provide safe learning environments for students, staff, as well as the families who are relinquishing, uh, supervision of their children to us each day. Summary of the highest and lowest rated thoughts, basically the highest rated thoughts would be those things that resonated with the most people. Okay, so we summarize those, the, the, the lowest rated thoughts would be the thoughts that obviously did not resonate as well with others. That gives you a little bit of insight as to, you know, what the people sort of resonated with, and where there was really a vast difference in terms of standing alone. So, there, there were, I think, five categories, distraction, emergencies, privacy and safety, rules enforcement, yep, there was five. I have a decent memory even at this ripe old age of thirty, uh, but there were five, and I tried to highlight, uh, what those categories, the highlights within those categories, so when I provide the slide deck to you, you'll be able to read that. I, I, again, just wanted to be able to recap for you, Mrs. Weldon, Mrs. Register, how we got to this point, and what you'll see there is that the, the resolution is actually a, a follow-up with some, some of the suggestions in the summary that was provided to the board back in November. So this was the yonder pouch, I, I will not go through this presentation, but I will provide a link for you to, uh, research that and, and give you some more insight in that regard. As I shared with the board back in November, yonder pouch is one potential solution. I think what's more critical is the policy and the way that we implement said policy. There's nothing that says you have to use a pouch, uh, you could use a box, you don't have to use anything, but what we do need to do is figure out if we're going to not allow cellphones, how do we manage that? If we're going to allow cellphones, how do we manage that? But most importantly, how do we protect the integrity of what's being taught and what's expected to be learned when students are on campus? This is more about the yonder program, these were the recommendations that I provided to the board, uh, and as you know, we are approaching the month of March, this is not an activity that I would prefer to wait until the start of the next school year to begin learning through, so it is our intention now that we have a resolution, and I think the board will have to take some additional steps within said resolution in the coming weeks, but it is our intent to begin piloting or rolling out this effort so that we can learn how to best do it in the fall, but we'd like to start doing that in March, we'll, we'll identify a school site or two, figure out what works, what doesn't work, and then come up with a plan based on what we want. And there it is. So that concludes that presentation, hopefully, uh, board members, Register and Weldon, that, that recap gives you an idea as to how we got to where we are and what we're striving to do the rest of this school year, so that we can be in the best possible position next school year and subsequent years.
Mit up the year MAP data. No, they, they couldn't make it tonight. Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chairman Brown, Board and Superintendent Simmons. Tonight I would like to review our MAP reading fluency middle of the year report. We have our non-negotiables, which are to be professional, be accountable, and communicate effectively, and our focus areas leads. We have our mission and our vision, as well as our roadmap to success, where we're ultimately aiming for increased student achievement. The purpose of today's presentation is to provide a data report on the middle of the year MAP reading fluency assessment. It would al, it would also give you an opportunity to compare our students' performance to the beginning of the year MAP reading fluency assessment. As a reminder, we are currently under Georgia Early Literacy Act, which is also known as House Bill 538. It includes five components, including the screeners, instructional materials, interventions, professional learning, and teacher preparation. MAP reading fluency is the district's literacy and dyslexia screener. It is an adaptive reading assessment that measures student skills and reading comprehension, fluency, and foundational literacy skills. The students complete MAP reading fluency three times per year, they completed it in August, again, in actually early January, and they're set to complete it again for the third time in April. This test is administered to all of our K-three students. With each administration, students can complete the foundational skills or adaptive oral reading subtest. For the middle of the year assessment, all students completed the foundational skills As we take a look at the data today, keep in mind that we have four levels of student proficiency. The data highlighted in red reflects those students that are performing below grade level expectations. Data highlighted in gold represents those students approaching grade level expectations. Data highlighted in green represents those students meeting grade level expectations, and the data represented in blue reflects those students exceeding grade level expectations. Our kindergarten students, again, were assigned the foundational skills subtest, which measures students' ability and phonological awareness, phonics, listening comprehension, and picture vocabulary. This furthered first data display represents students' decoding skills in two areas, phonological awareness and phonics. As you can see, you have a depiction of the data in which students perform in the fall compared to where they fared in the winter, for both phonological awareness and phonics. You can see that from fall to winter, we had an increase in the percentage of students that met or exceeded grade level expectations. While we had an increase in this area for phonological awareness, we also had an increase in those students performing below grade level expectations. Similarly, in phonics and word recognition, we had an increase of students performing at or above grade level expectations, as evidenced by the data, the data highlighted in blue and green, but we also had a slight increase in those students performing below grade level expectations, as evidenced by the data highlighted in red. The next data display represents our kindergarten students' performance in language comprehension, which is comprised of listening comprehension and picture vocabulary. As you can see in both listening comprehension and picture vocabulary, students increased their performance in both domains from fall to winter in both listening comprehension and picture vocabulary. Moving along to our first grade data, just like kindergarten students, we did have an increase of students performing at or above grade level expectations. What you see in this graphic is levels zero, one, and two, all of the students highlighted in red do represent below grade level expectations. Our goal is to move them from level zero to level five in any one of those areas. So while we do still have a large number of students in the below grade level expectations, we did transition those students from level zero to level two from fall to winter in phonological awareness, and the same for phonics and word recognition. When it came to listening comprehension and picture vocabulary, our first grade students also increased in the percentage of students performing at the meets or exceeds levels in both listening comprehension and picture vocabulary. Our second grade data shows us that we have a little bit of a challenge with phonological awareness as well as phonics and word recognition. While we did have a slight increase in the students performing above grade level expectations, we also had more students performing below grade level expectations in both phonological awareness and phonics. What I would like to point out is that the students have a moving target, they had a set target in the, in the beginning of the year, they had a different target in the middle of the year. We could have students who were simply not moving based on the target that was set for When it comes to listening comprehension, as well as picture vocabulary, just like our students in kindergarten and first grade, we did increase the percentage of students meeting and exceeding expectations in both categories. And lastly, we have our third grade data. Third grade data, again, like second grade data, shows us that we have some challenges with phonological awareness, as well as phonics and word recognition. What I will point out to you, something that you're very familiar with, Board, is our use of Orton-Gillingham, we use that in grades K-one and two. We do not use that approach in kind, in, in third grade, and it may be something that we can consider for the future, because that is where the students are struggling the most. When looking at listening comprehension, as well as picture vocabulary, you see that just like the other grade levels, our students have increased their pass rate there. In a nutshell, we have four domains that we're assessing on MAP reading fluency, phonological awareness, phonics, listening comprehension, and picture vocabulary. Students in grades K, first and third grade showed growth from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. It is evident that we had more students to meet or exceed grade level expectations in phonological awareness in these areas. However, we had an increase of percentage of students in second grade that performed below grade level expectations in phonological awareness. In phonics, our K-first and third grade students also showed growth, however, our second grade students, we still had a large number of students to perform below grade level expectations. In listening comprehension, all of our students, students in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade showed growth from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year assessment, thus seeing more students meet or exceed grade level expectations. And then lastly, in picture vocabulary, we saw students in kindergarten, second and third grade to show growth from beginning of the year to middle of the year, but there was no movement of our first grade students for this component. With all of the data points that we collect, we know that there are always implications for our work as district leaders, as school leaders, and as classroom teachers. So in the way of leaders and teachers, we will continue implementing individual reading plans for students who perform below grade level expectations. This is a requirement that is set forth in the House Bill 538. It is also a requirement that we continue to provide evidence-based instructional support to all classrooms in which more than twenty percent of the grade level perform below grade expectations. Leaders and teachers will also continue to work with parents to ensure students receive the additional reading support they need via our MTSS program. This includes allowing students to access iReady from home. Lastly, district leaders will provide more intentional support to school leaders and teachers with instructional practices that support instruction and phonological awareness and phonics. One example of this is the launch of the OG Leaders Academy for our building leaders, including principals, assistant principals, and instructional coaches, so that they will be more, um, prepared to provide feedback to teachers when they are struggling to deliver effective instruction in phonological awareness and phonics. Chairman Brown, this concludes my presentation. If there are any questions?
Board members, we've heard the presentation on middle of the year MAP reading fluency data from Dr. Audrey Greer. Are there any questions from the board at this time? All right, Ms. McDonald?
Dear, thank you for your, uh, report. You know, I noticed in this report, in the iReady report, and I'm sorry they're not here because that, that data is pretty telling also, um... I think I, I remember hearing attendance issues in our, in our lower grades, would you agree or disagree? I, I don't know, I'm just asking. Is attendance an issue?
I cannot speak, um, to attendance.
Well, could someone in the room get that to us to see what the aver, average attendance rate is for each grade level? Because I believe everyone in the room knows that if you can't read after you, you leave the third grade, your, your ability to be successful
Diminishes.
Wanes.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I see that kindergarten and first grade does really well, and then second and third seem to, I, I don't know what happens, I'm looking at that third grade BOY to MOY data, and, you know, it's all pink. Uh, and, and you mentioned that's a concern, obviously, so how will we think outside the box to bring these students, and I've, the last two meetings, after going to GSBA in December, knowing what Marietta City Schools has done, how, how are we going to think outside the box to get these children to where they need to be to be successful?
So one of the things, Ms. McDonald, that we did, um, recognize very early on is that the curriculum for third grade does not always provide opportunities for teachers to provide instruction in phonological awareness and phonics. So we did start the school year off with an adjustment to our curriculum. This is the first year that we have actually im, implemented MAP, um, twice, and we do know that if we continue to see this type of performance, that we have to continue to make adjustments with our curriculum. So that is one thing that we are doing, is adjusting our curriculum to ensure that our third grade students have an opportunity to have instruction in these areas. When they get into third grade, keep in mind, I mentioned earlier, that we do not offer, um, Orton-Gillingham, but that is definitely something that we can consider as we move forward as well, maybe extending Orton-Gillingham or that approach to our upper grades.
How, how far can you go with OG? I mean, I don't know, how, how many grade levels does it cover?
So it'll, it'll go up to fifth grade. We have, um, two different segments, if you will, so right now, we're doing Orton-Gillingham, but theirs are part two, which addresses the upper grades that we can use, so it will not be exactly the Orton-Gillingham approach, but it will be something very similar.
I mean, I, I, I've just got to say that I'm concerned, and I'm sure you guys are too, I'm not here to place blame on anyone, I, I just don't do that, because I know as a former educator, there are so many variables that can enter into these scores, um, things that, that none of us have any control over. But I am concerned, especially about third grade.
Yes.
So I do believe that we need to think outside the box about how to get all of our, not only all, all of our elementary on reading level, but especially to be able to read, because I believe I saw a report this summer where fifty-six percent of our third graders are not reading on level.
And I honestly think that's what contributed to the birth of House Bill 538. We have such a tremendous number of students who are not reading by the end of second grade, it's not just a problem plaguing our community, but the state of Georgia at large.
But yes, and I totally agree with that, because I've seen the figures myself, and I, I totally agree with that. I'm not, I'm not singling out Griffins Spalding, it, it's a statewide issue, for sure. But I, I'm concerned as a, as a board member, so, and I know you are too.
Yes, ma'am, I am.
And I appreciate your, uh... And I appreciate your, yeah, but it just seems, when I was reading over these reports, that, you know, we do good in kindergarten, we do good in first, and okay in second, or kind of okay in second, and then after that, I don't know what happens. So if we can define what happens, or what's occurring, or, I don't know, it's just kind of weird to see the goodness of K and 1, and then it just kind of starts declining after that. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
All right, I'll go. Dr. Greer, you said in third grade you had to make some adjustments. What were those adjustments as it relates? I guess if you look at the third grade curriculum, what the state provides, what adjustments did you make?
So one of the things that we did, of course, last year was adopt SAVIS. SAVIS actually has a very small component related to phonics and phonological awareness. Just lifting that and making sure that the teachers, for every unit of instruction embedded that into their daily activities is what we had to do. Before, we used SAVIS, of course, we were using RCD, which, that did not necessarily include that piece. So making sure that we lift those phonics and phonological awareness lessons out of SAVIS is something that we had to be intentional about when we developed the curriculum for this school year.
So SAVIS was the only thing that you used to show the adjustment? Were there other programs that were used?
Well, we use iReady as well. So one of the things that we are actually doing right now is working with our third grade students in the area of vocabulary. We know how much of a piece that is for just development in reading. So not only are we using SAVIS, we're using iReady. Schools may have specific programs that they're using, but at the district office, those are the programs that we're focusing on. MAP Read Influency, too, also strongly emphasizes the Florida Center for Reading Research. So we do use a lot of activities right now in some of our classrooms to ensure students have access to quality materials during the lessons.
So for the things that they do at the school level, they do let you know what they're doing, right?
We have a district curriculum, so yes. And we're able to conduct those classroom observations to provide feedback and support on that.
But when, so if I were to ask you, using SAVIS or whatever, so let's say we were to take Crescent, Oars, and Jackson Road. So everybody's using SAVIS, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then the second thing would be, what other programs are they using maybe at Oars if they're not using at Jackson Road, or they're not using at another school?
I can't speak to specific programs that they're using that I'm not aware of, but as a district, we use SAVIS, we use MAP Read Influency, and the embedded resources there, we also use iReady. Those are our district programs.
Because I'm just trying to think, if one school is doing well, then maybe they could share with other building administrators or leaders what they're doing to get those increasing scores for MAP.
I think there's definitely an opportunity there.
All right, hold on one second, Ms. McDonald.
Sure.
Can we go to slide 13? Right? All right, so slide 13, we see that there is a lot of red for second grade, and we see that, you know, we see the different shades and everything. So the question becomes, are there issues with the professional learning or the literacy program implementation?
I don't want to say that there are issues with either. We have gaps, and we have to address those gaps. Those gaps could be what students brought to the table in the way of foundational skills. It could be teacher skill set, but I don't want to pinpoint either one of those as something that we have to address. I think it's a collective responsibility in all of those that you mentioned have to be addressed.
So, Dr. Simmons, how would you approach this, your expertise? Well, she's saying that they're not necessarily issues, but gaps. How can we look at the professional learning to determine if it is, obviously, we know that it's lined up and geared towards helping them with phonics, or helping them to, to help them to teach. So how can we look at the professional learning that's being done to see what the gaps are, and then how can we look at the literacy programs that are being implemented to see where the gaps are? I mean, is that something that you can, maybe in tactical with your cabinet, or with Dr. Taylor and her team, look at those to see where those gaps are? Because it seems like we keep going, each time, we keep going over the same thing. And so now that we know, we see what the issues are, if it's not professional literacy learning, if it's not the literacy, then it has to be something. There's a rooted issue there that we got to get to. And so maybe being able to dig deep and look at that, is that something that you can provide for the board as we're looking at those gaps with professional learning and the literacy program implementation?
So I think we can provide something. I think what, from my perspective, when Dr. Greer talks about the gaps, what's not here in this depiction is what this performance looks like in each grade, in each school, in each classroom. Those are gaps in and of itself. So this is a collection of performance from varying schools, varying students, those who were present on the day of the assessment, those who had access to a teacher for the entire time that the curriculum or the program was in use. So the gaps, from my perspective, is trying to control the conditions to where all of that is equivalent, if you would, making sure that if we provide PL on a particular modality, or we provide PL on a particular program, that PL is provided to those who need it, they apply it, the students are present, all of those are the gaps. We can look to continue to find trends that enable us to shore up, you know, whether it be, you know, the number of PL sessions, or whether it be, you know, the amount of time on task for students prior to the assessment. But that's what I heard when Dr. Greer mentioned the gaps. I can tell you, sure, we can do that, but it may not yield the response that you were looking for, but I do believe we can continue to find ways to connect the dots so that there are less gaps.
I think the response that I'm looking for is that, hey, Board, we had this meeting, Mr. Brown asked a question, we've taken a look at both the professional learning that's being done, we're looking at the literacy program implementation, and here's what we come up with. You know, it is not the Board's job to do that work, it is the superintendent's job to do that work and bring to us and answer those questions that we're asking. And so in that, I'm asking, when can we get an update as to the question that I just asked, whether it's professional learning or the literacy program? Which also brings me to the next thing. If you're looking at second grade, and if you look at all of our elementary schools, can you say that there's a certified teacher in every second grade in Griffins-Balding County School System?
No, I can't.
Right. And so probably it could be implementation, could be part of the issue.
So those were the things that I was talking about, that were the gaps.
Right.
I'm not suggesting that the Board do it, but if your answer is, can I provide you with an update on what we've found? Absolutely.
Okay. And so, all right, and so in finding that, and so when you're thinking about that, and you're looking at second grade, and looking at how many classrooms may not have certified teachers, that could be an issue that we're experiencing as well. Also, can we go to slide nine? So on, yeah, right there, so on slide nine, there's no red for below grade level expectations, but there's an 18% below in the winter. What led to this happening?
As I indicated, there's a moving target. So that target that students had at the beginning of the year, it moved. There could have been students who simply remained there, they did not grow to the next target that was set for them.
All right. And for the scholars who particularly did not grow, were we able to go back and look at the professional learning and look at the implementation of programs to see what could have benefited, or could have been the reason why that didn't happen?
So we are looking at individual student data, Mr. Brown, and in the individual student data reports, it tells you exactly what those students did not meet expectations in. So in that way, we're addressing individual students and their growth areas, not necessarily attacking it as a whole.
As a whole, all right. And I think it's important, especially in trying to, scholars understanding and families understanding where their scholars are, it's very important for us to be able to look at the data and be able to provide support for that. The third question that I have is a two-part question. Let's look at slides 15 and 16. So we'll start with slide 15 and 16. The third grade scholars are red or below for decoding, but the green are exceeding for language comprehension. What can be attributed to this?
What I believe to be the contribution to this is the curriculum for third grade. As I mentioned earlier, we do not have a large part of our curriculum that's tied to phonological awareness and phonics in third grade. We use the Orton-Gillingham approach in grades K, first, and second. So just that absence of that best practice may be missing and may be contributing to this data. While we have tried to lift some of that out of SAVIS, we know that our students get a tremendous amount of support through the Orton-Gillingham approach on a daily basis. They may not see that much intensive instruction in these areas in third grade through the SAVIS curriculum.
Okay, and see, in using, we talked about the adjustments, and then you also mentioned, you know, with small component and being able to embed it in the daily activities in their instruction. I guess my next question comes as part of this one. Seeing these scores, is that an indicator of what the third grade milestone scores may be?
So this is a screener, and the standards for third grade milestones, they may be reflected in this particular area. I'm not going to say that this is a reflection here under language comprehension, but when they get into third grade, they have more language standards.
Okay. So.
I do see that some of you have their iReady data, that is going to be your predictor. This is by no means a predictor, so if I wanted to kind of use something as a prediction, I would think I would rely on the iReady data to get an idea of how third grade may perform.
But this, as a screener, this provides what for you?
This provides us with an idea of where students are with their foundational literacy skills.
And how, I mean, just if you look at from year to year, let's just take last year, do you think there's much of a difference in the scores?
This is the first year that we've done MAP like this.
Like, what do you mean, like this?
Meaning, we did the MAP assessment for math and reading, this is the first year for MAP Read Influency. This is focused just on foundational literacy skills, whereas MAP that we know that we've used in the past did not focus on foundational skills.
But was the scores not too far off?
They're not too far off.
Right. So in knowing that, again, we're going back to being able to address those gaps, and I guess, you know, Dr. Simmons is going to do a deeper dive and dig into this to provide some feedback to the board on this. And so I guess the last thing is, and you talked about it a little bit to answer my fourth question, when you talk about the fluency in doing it, this is the first year, and providing it the other year before that. So what are the big takeaways that you get from the screener and the data results? And how do you think it will impact teaching and learning in our district?
The big takeaway for me is where we are strong in each individual grade level. For me specifically, because I am working with teaching and learning, that informs my decisions when it comes to curriculum, even when it comes to professional learning. You mentioned that. So we know with House Bill 538, one of the requirements is that all of the teachers have to be trained in the science of reading. That is true work, and it is informing us on which grade levels need a little bit more support than others, in the way of the teachers, with their training, and the way of the students as well, and then with the curriculum decisions that we have to make going into next year.
So it definitely seems like we have our work cut out for us, and we're going to be doing everything that we can to provide teacher support and to make sure that our scholars definitely have the support that they need so they can be proficient and distinguished learners. So are there any other questions from the board? Yes, Ms. Weldon, and then Ms. McDonald.
How long have we been using the iReady program?
We have used it as a district. We are in our second year, full year, using it as a district for grades K through eight. And then we also use it at the high school for our tier two and tier three support.
Okay. And how many minutes each day are the students required to get onto the iReady program?
It's not a daily minute count, it is a weekly minute count, and it averages 45 to 60 minutes per week to get the desired results.
And have the teachers been surveyed or asked for any of their input on what they think about the iReady program, or what the gaps are in the reading, what the issues are? Have they been, had a voice?
So I don't know if they've been given an official survey, but we do have literacy academies for the classroom teachers, where they're able to come together, they're able to share their concerns in that manner, but not an official survey.
Okay. And my last question is, do the students, when they're attending Program Challenge on that day, are they required to do iReady?
I think they do have the students get on iReady while they're over there.
And why is that?
I think that's a decision that they made in the building, for them to have certain minutes. We did find that even our gifted and talented students are performing below grade level. This data does not just reflect our general population, it reflects all of our students. So if there are students that are needing that additional support, those teachers, that leader over there saw a need for them to actually take part in it.
So you're saying the leader over there was wanting to do the iReady at Program Challenge?
That's what they're, they have an implementation plan there this year.
Oh, okay, okay.
I have not given a direction for them to do it.
Right, right. So does it affect the outcome of the weekly testing or something if they don't do it on that day, the Program Challenge?
So the goal is for them to get 45 to 60 minutes per week.
Right.
And they may very well get that before they go to Program Challenge. Just say they go to Program Challenge on a Friday, they may get their minutes completed by Thursday, and they may not necessarily have to do it, but I'm not sure of the specific timestamps that they have given their students for that day that they're there on campus.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I'm going to tell this story again because I think it's something that we should consider. When I went to Georgia School Board Association back in December, we were at one of the early morning sessions, the Marietta City School Superintendent told us about a remarkable program and how they turned their reading scores around. They had recognized in elementary schools over 1,000 students who were reading below level. They brought in reading specialists, and I have asked around, I don't believe we have any reading specialist here, is that correct?
We have three.
We have three.
Yes, ma'am.
And where are they located?
They're at Ann Street, Atkinson, and Moore.
Okay, okay. I'm going to say this again because a lot of this is on us, you know what I'm saying? Because our third graders have got to read on level, so I'm asking everyone in the room to think outside the box, and if we have to bring in more reading specialists, I would like to see what the reading specialist at those three elementary schools, how long have they been here? How many years?
This is their first year implementation.
Okay, very good. So it'll take a couple of years to get some positive feedback, hopefully, from what they're trying to do there. I'm just sitting here trying to think outside the box, could we have a reading school within a school? Identify, like at Jordan Hill, identify those students who are reading below level, especially in K 1 and 2. Could we have a little reading school within the school to help these kids get to where they need to be? Because I want every child that goes through Griffins-Balding to be successful, but you're not going to be successful if you can't read.
Right.
That's it. I mean, I had parents, two parents at home, a lot of our children don't. I read every night to one of my parents, sometimes both of my parents, and all three of us turned out pretty good. We can read pretty good, but if our kids can't read, they're not going to be successful. So I'm asking all of you in the room to please think outside the box how we can make this better for our kids. Because I do believe we need more than three reading specialists in this district. I'll get off my soapbox, I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would you, Ms. McDonald, would you like to go visit Marietta City Schools to see, I know we talked about it at GSBA, but would you like to go and maybe sit down and talk with them so that you can bring it back to us?
Yeah, sure. I think, I brought it up thinking maybe somebody here would do it, but I mean, I'd be happy to do it, but I, I mean, he- But I, I mean, he told us his success story, that's my whole point. It took them less than a year to get, oh, I believe I remember him saying four hundred kids came off of that list of a thousand in one year. That's significant, in my opinion. It is.
And I believe that, you know, and we go to these conferences, GSBA, to be able to see what new and innovative things that districts are doing. And this is something that you have brought back, and so, and I was just having a sidebar with Dr. Simmons about that, so.
I would be happy to, yes.
We're gonna arrange for you and maybe someone from Teaching and Learning to go up to Marietta City Schools to ask those questions, and then bring something back to the board that we could use.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Holmes, Leader Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity just to make a comment. This is something that I and others in the community have taken a grave importance, interest in. One thing I do want to say, this is not just for the superintendent, Dr. Greer, Dr. Taylor, and their staff to resolve. This is a community problem. One thing that we have to stop doing is looking for other people to do the work, and we just sit back and not get involved. I guarantee you, once you go to these community, Marietta City School, you'll find that the parental involvement is going to be high. In listening to Dr. Greer and Dr. Taylor, let me give you just a brief synopsis of what's going on with some of our kids. It's a cultural thing. These kids are being tested on professional language. When they go home and converse with their parents, siblings, they use a different cultural language. For an example, they may say, "I seen them." But on the test, they are looking to mark the correct answer as "I saw them." This is what they hear day in and day out. So unless there's reinforcement in more areas than just at school a few hours a day, that's the struggle that I see that we have in our community. Because we do have, if you look at the, let's be honest, when you look at the test scores and those who are on the bubble, at the bottom of the barrel, those are those cultural kids. But we cannot sit on the sideline and wait for somebody else. We need to get everybody involved that is willing to get involved, all hands on deck, and stop waiting on Dr. Greer, Dr. Taylor, them to improve test scores. This is a community project until our community stop pointing fingers and get involved. We're not gonna see that improvement that we desire to see. That's just the reality of it. It's not just here, it's in other areas, but they have taken different avenues to resolve or address their issues. We can go visit Marietta City School, but I guarantee you, you're gonna see more parental involvement than what we have here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And it's good that, you know, we all have our opinions and being able to share. I think everyone up here wants our school district to be the best. We want to see our scholars achieve. We want to see our teachers thrive. And so whether if it's all hands on deck, visiting, or whatever, I think that it's in the best interest to do something so that we can get the best outcome. And so we greatly appreciate those comments and for what you and your organization is doing to help with our reading scores and read influency in our community. And so thank you so much for all of that, Mr. Holmes. All right, any other questions? All righty, thank you so much, Dr. Greer. Next up, Mr. Byron Jones, FY26 budget outlook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, board, again. My goal for this evening is to give you some, really some terminology and maybe a few behind-the-scenes visions of what we've been doing over the last few weeks headed towards a planned March budget recommendation. So with that being said, we are non-negotiables, I'm gonna communicate effectively to you this evening, take questions if necessary. Our vision, again, distinctive brand, strong leaders, great schools. Our mission, again, is headed towards empowering each student to graduate college and career readiness. And our roadmap to success, which we talked about in a prior meeting, everything ultimately, this is the third year or will be the fourth year for our strategic plan where we continue to reinforce these blue and boxes and green here on the screen. So a little bit of what's been going on lately for you to have a little insight with the schools and departments. We go through a process every year of issuing allotments to schools, and those were issued on or about February 4th. A few of them went out on February 5th, but we had a smarter meeting last week on Tuesday. I discussed that with the principals, and those went out later that day. We will ask for those to be returned to finance on March 6th. When we say returned to finance this year, we're going through a little bit of a different training exercise. We're all to the software that the board approved a few years ago. We're asking the folks to return that to us in a little bit different format. So we're actually doing some training sessions with bookkeepers, and we'll be doing that for principals. Another session is scheduled for tomorrow in my office. So personnel allotments, just a little bit more about that. We look at what data is returned in the Department of Education portal, DOE portal, in October. So for example, what the schools are earning for the FTE account. And then we also look at what their actual data is in January or February, so we compare those two. And what I issued back was the higher of the two. Sometimes we'll see enrollment decreases in January. You know, a few years ago, we had the tornadoes, we had other impacts that might have reduced in enrollment in that period. So we would leave the school held harmless for that because that's something they couldn't control. So we do look at two counts. So that's what I was saying on that slide for October and January. We do issue a separate allotment for special ed because those are some restricted funds that we ask the schools to spend on behalf of those students. And we do have some budget meetings scheduled for the new board members. We've always invited the board members if they want to come to these. These are in-person, about fifty minutes to an hour for each school. We physically sit down with each school. We do many more meetings leading up to these dates, but this is when they come in and talk about their school improvement plan to the superintendent and cabinet. So March 7th, 12th, 19th, and 20th are when those are scheduled at the current time. This next slide is really just to let you know that when they return information back to us, we ask for a little bit more in-depth information. If there's a new initiative or something that we're gonna bear the cost of, whether that be their consolidated budget or general fund or whatever the funding source, we ask them to justify that, or if they're adding a new expense, what possibly are they replacing that with? Are they just adding, or are we cutting something off to replace it with something new? So that's, this is some of the data that we request them to return back to us. For the departments, they'll go through a similar process. We issued information to them on February 7th. So the departments, again, as well, will be going through a process in the new database where they will return information to us, and they have gone through some training on that. And we'll have more training as well. And those, again, we will cut those or close those on March 6th. And then the presentations to cabinet at this point are scheduled for March 13th and 18th. These next couple of slides, I'm gonna talk a little more in depth on this first one. And the last two, I'll just kind of skip around a little bit because some of this you've heard before. But enrollment increases and decrease, you know, we're still hovering around the nine thousand mark if you count pre-K. For the board members that do not know, our pre-K is funded through the lottery, separate allocation to the district. It's normally in the 2.2 million dollar range, somewhere in there. The K through 12, kindergarten through 12, is what's funded from the Department of Education. So when I'm talking to you about the 60 million to 65 million dollar range, I'm talking about kindergarten through 12 enrollment. Legislative session, I believe today's day 15, so twenty-five more to go. I think they've been talking really a little bit more about the FY25 amended budget than they have the 26 budget. I have heard no conversation about teacher salary increases or anything like that that might be kind of a buzzword, which has happened the last few years. I've heard nothing about that at this point. What we do know is teachers' retirement will go up. So almost 22% is what we match or will be matching in FY26 if somebody's on the teacher retirement system. So that we withhold 6% of their earnings, the district matches 21.91%. So that's an estimated cost of about a million dollars right now. I'll get closer on that number once we have some more data, a little bit more firmed up. Mentioned it's gonna be the fourth year of the roadmap to success. We've talked a lot about inflationary increases and whether that could or could not impact us in the future based on board decisions. We normally bring a longevity step for employees into the board for approval with the budget process, and we look at that from the certified level and the classified employees level. So again, when I'm talking about classified employees, I'm normally talking about custodians, bus drivers, myself, somebody that's not a certified teacher employee funded with the state salary scale from the governor's office. State health benefit plan, what they're telling us right now is for the first time since probably ever, they're gonna charge school districts the same amount for a certified employee that they do for a classified employee. So if you do eighteen hundred and eighty-five dollars a month times 12, that's a little over $22,000. So again, the rising cost of health insurance, somewhere around four million dollars on that would be our expense amount. And that would probably be all funds considered, not just the general fund. And then we've talked about this before. We currently have our plan for employees here in Griffin Spalding on a graduated scale for certified. If we can continue to retain them, we hope to bring that back as an additional recommendation again in FY26. Again, we're planning on using our fund balance for that. So again, those are people that are committed to staying in Griffin Spalding for a tenured amount of time. Year one, year two, year three, that'll continue to go up. These next three bullets, you know, I don't know that I need to get into all that again mainly, you know, they're all kind of tied together. But millage rate, again, you have a cap of 20, you're at 16.742. The average of a mill is about 2.5 million, that should go up a little bit based on property value. We do continue, Ms. Battle's office does a, with Dr. Blasen game, I think, is involved, several people about looking at our employee base, and we go through an analysis each year to see, you know, what our earnings are, and that's what our state formula is based on, so earned or unearned positions, et cetera. If you have small campuses in the district, you just need to be aware that it takes about four to 450 students to earn state entitlement money. So that's on the slide, just to remind you that the school, if the board superintendent wants small schools, there's a cost for that. You just need to be aware of that. So, you know, if some communities want larger schools, it puts them into a category where they might earn roof replacement. If they have a small school, they're not earning any of that. That's your SPOLOs that will continue to pay for upgrades to the campus or maintenance items. Recruitment and retention, you know, we've already talked about that. Just like students, where we need to recruit students, we need students, we need employees. We think we've got a good incentive package to keep them here, so we'll see how that turns out. I'm really excited that we can continue to recommend to do that. Fund balance usage, you know, you had the auditors here a couple of meetings ago. I think we were in the 45 million dollar range, so if you look at your financial report through the next one I'm gonna show you, or maybe the last one, it was in the 55 million dollar range. That's just because our tax receipts have come in, so that'll come back down some based on the amount of fund balance we use. So if you are ever presented a budget, and I'm just making up a number, if it's 100 in revenue and the expenses are 105 million, then we're using 5 million in fund balance because we have that left over from a prior year. So that's all that term means. And cash flow, we've talked about this before, and I like to tell you and remind you about semi-monthly payroll, which I think has been a good thing for our school district. You know, when our taxes have not come in till the December-January timeframe, we're able to not be compromised from meeting those payrolls and benefits because we have that cash. A lot of school districts, even some around us, have to do something called borrow on a tax anticipation note with interest. So they have to go out and go through a formal process to borrow money and then pay it back. They're just getting it in one hand, paying it back in the other. And I did that probably 20 years ago, so I've been through that. That's just a formal process, you have to approve it, we have to bid it. So this allows us not to have to go through that by having a positive cash flow at basically any time of the year. I mentioned safety and security. We're hoping that the legislature is gonna continue to fund this initiative. We, I know in FY25, we got close to $900,000, I think, in a safety grant, which we've been investing that in some technological items and safety items at the schools. We hope that the legislature will continue to fund that. We've talked to you about non-instructional resources, where I had told you in the prior years, the superintendent had given us a directive to attempt to cut 5% on some of our budgets, which is this year we're in right now, and we were able to accomplish that. When you hear about one-time funds, you know, those are things that we may get a grant for in one year. We're hanging on, thinking, we're hoping we're gonna get it the next year, and a lot of times we don't get the grant the next year or they cut it. So then there's a decision by the superintendent that we recommend to keep this as an ongoing program, and if we do, then we've got to put it into the budget and get the board to approve that as an ongoing cost. This FY26 will be the first full year of our debt service payments. We actually, for our 49 million dollar bond, we have an interest payment coming up in about two weeks. And then when we get to July, we'll be on a twice-a-year payment, one's an interest and one's a principal interest. So I just point that to you. Right now, our SPOLOs receipts are supposed to pay for the debt service payment, but if for some reason the debt service payment was not able to be funded with SPOLOs for whatever reason, then the general fund would have to pay for that debt service payment. So we just put that on here for you to be aware of that. Community eligibility, that's Mr. Wheeler's office from the nutrition program where every student receives breakfast and lunch at no cost. I just mentioned that to you because we're still in a series of years under that provision. Limitations on travel, I really just mentioned this because we have had times in the past where we've limited state travel, especially during the COVID years, people were not allowed to travel out of state or whatever, out of country. And that's just something that we could consider. Weather-related disasters, I don't really need to tell you all about that. Y'all know what we've been through here in Griffin Spalding community. Cash flow, et cetera, if we had to continue to make payroll and payments, but we had no revenue coming in or the state or FEMA, we're waiting on reimbursements, that's another reason that the budget needs to be considering high cash flows. And ultimately, student achievement needs to drive everything I just said, which Dr. Greer did a good job talking about that earlier. It's all about that. All of the other stuff is really secondary to that. So in summary, budget calendar, we're in February. Superintendent priorities, a little bit more of an overview with some money maybe involved in that will come in March. April, we'll have our two public hearings, we'll actually present a tentative budget to you for approval. In May, we'll host another public hearing, the plans to present a final budget to you in May. And then subsequent months, we'll come to you for millage rate hearings if necessary, et cetera. Again, that's normally a few months after that process plays out. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Mr. Jones about the budget outlook? Well, I just want to go ahead and put it in now so that, because I may forget in the next two months or whatever. But I think that one of the first things I did as it relates to the budget when I joined the board was we were able to give climate and cultural grants to our schools. And one of the things that I think the board should take an interest in, and I think many of us have all been judges at the Great Griffin Shake. And that is normally done by Ms. Amy Brown, who's a teacher at Program Challenge. But that is something that benefits all of our scholars here in the district. So I would like, and it's a very small amount, I would like to allocate $1,000 to Program Challenge to be used for the Great Griffin Shake. That will allow Ms. Brown to be able to change out the different scenarios and things, and they've been using the same stuff for like the last five, six years that they've been doing. And so I think this is a great investment to our scholars. I had a great time being one of the judges. We were at one of the stations, and my arm was broke, and the scholar had to call my sister to come pick me up from the hospital, but it was a rotary phone. And just seeing those scholars just look at the phone and be like, oh, okay, hold on. Dial sister, no, we can't talk to it. And so I just think in being able to help Program Challenge, us allocating them $1,000 to help to better serve our scholars at Program Challenge. Does everybody agree that we can do that? Does everybody agree that we can do that?
Absolutely.
Great. All right, that's it?
Appreciate it.
All right, next up, these are first reading policies. We got policy GAI solicitations. Are you doing all of these, Ms. Battle?
Not all of them.
Not all of them? Okay.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Brown, Board members, and Superintendent Simmons. The Board and District are collaboratively reviewing and updating all Board policies. At this time, there's no need to revise policy GAI. A new regulation, however, has been written to support this policy. We will post policy GAI solicitations on Assembly to receive input from Board members and stakeholders for 30 days, after which time we will bring the policy back for final review, adoption, and approval.
All right. Any Board members, you have any questions as it relates to policy GAI? All right, thank you so much. We'll move on to our next policy, which is policy GARE, employee assignment.
Yes, good evening again. This policy, GARE1, we, this policy does not require any changes. We present it to you for first read. We have updated our regulation to support this policy. This policy will remain available for 30 days, at which time we will bring it back for final review and adoption.
All right. Board members, any questions? All righty. Next policy is policy JCDB.
Good evening, Board members. Mr. Brown, Board members, and Dr. Simmons. I'm presenting the revision, the revision of Board policy JCDB, Student Dress Code. The only revisions we have for the policy at this time is to remove the language concerning the face covering requirements for students. Our next steps are to make sure that we post a policy into Assembly to receive input from the Board members and stakeholders for 30 days. The policy will be brought to the next Board meeting for second reading and final Board adoption.
All right, Board members, you have any questions about this policy, policy JCDB? All right, Mr. Holmes?
I was trying to see what, what were you referring to about the face covering?
Yes, sir, line 17.
Okay, okay. Okay, I see. Thank you.
17.
Had to put my other glasses on.
Yeah. I don't think we received the right one with the strike with lines 22 and 23. Am I right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Just make sure that we have that before. All right, any other questions? No. All right, thank you so much, Dr. Redley. All right, we're here for information items, construction renovation progress summary, number 300, and monthly facilities maintenance report. We are now moving on to governance team comments. We'll start with Ms. Sherri Weldon. Comment, any comment? Okay, well, you don't have to go. All right, Ms. McDonald?
Dr. Greer, I already will be here though at some point to present. Okay, thank you. I forgot to ask you that when you were up here. Earlier today, I've had a great day. Earlier today, Mr. Brown and I were at AZK, and we were interviewing students for the scholar to sit on the school board. And I can tell you, I was totally impressed with the two young ladies that we, we met with this morning. Totally impressed. And we learned that AZ has a bad name, and it shouldn't have a bad name for what it does for our students that go there. These girls are in the academy. They're not there for a tribunal or post-tr tribunal. They're there because they chose to be there, because they felt like that was what was best for them. And to make that decision that early in their life, I thought it was pretty cool to sit there and listen to those two young ladies. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Marissa and Emily that we interviewed this morning. It's gonna be a hard decision, I'm sure, with other Board members that have interviewed students to, to be on our, scholars to be on our Board. So I just wanted to give a shout out to them.
All right, that's it.
Thank you.
All right, awesome. Ms. Register?
Nothing.
All right, Leader Holmes?
Yeah, I, I did, Ms. McDonald kind of touched on it. You know, these scholars that we interview, and I guess we can, I want to bring it up so that we can have a discussion about it because one, we interviewed, which I think would be an excellent scholar, but she's a senior, you know, a graduation coming up, and I, I don't, I don't see how we could properly utilize her unless we just start immediately. But I wanted to bring that up, and I thank Ms. McDonald for bringing it up. These scholars that we've interviewed would be excellent. I don't care which way we go with them. With that being said, just thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, sir. You know, we have been working on this for quite some time, and it is good to finally see everything coming together as it relates to the interviews that we've done with the scholars. So Mr. Holmes and Ms. Register interviewed our scholars at Spalding High School. Myself and Ms. Weldon interviewed at Griffin High School. And then today, myself and Ms. McDonald interviewed at AZ Kelsey. And so just hearing about the interviews at Spalding High School and sitting in the two from Griffin High School and AZ Kelsey, it is great to see the number of scholars who have an interest. And we learned today that there were more than two who actually had an interest at AZ Kelsey, but the principal decided to, which was a great thing to narrow it down because you had some that were applying that, that did not have the GPA, but they still want to be involved. So we're gonna make sure that we, whether it's coming up with a student advisory committee or adding them to the superintendent's advisory committee, I think it'd be great to have scholars who want to provide their input to make their district a better place. Want to give a shout out to our Fine Arts Department. There are some really cool artwork. If you look over here on this table here and you look around, either artwork was done by staff members that teach art or either our scholars. And so I want to bring your attention, before you leave our boardroom, please go over here and look at this table over here. There is a 3D portrait of Coach Johnny Goodrum that they did for Black History. There is a painting of Suzie B. Atkinson. There is also another 3D image of Wyoming Tyus and her Olympic gold medal win. And I think there was one more that Ms. Wilson told me about, but I just want everybody to go through, check it out over there as we celebrate Black History. We have some amazing people in our hometown that have been history makers. And so in the month of February, I just like to each day highlight several people. And so I just want to just kick off to highlight one of the first African-Americans elected to public office in Griffin Spalding, and that is Mary Stinson. Mrs. Mary Stinson was a member of the Board of Education, District 1. Proud to be her school board member. She is also, she was also the first African-American to receive a statewide appointment and be Chair of the Cosmetology Board and License Review for the state of Georgia. She was appointed by Joe Frank Harris. And she owned and operated a beauty salon and school called Total Image. And she's just a true history maker, president and chair of the AZ Kelsey Trust Fund. And so just want to highlight and celebrate Ms. Mary Stinson. I believe Ms. Stinson is like 94 years old. She just had a birthday, which was December 31st, and it is just always good to be in her presence and to learn about history in our city. And so I just want to give a shout out to Ms. Mary Stinson. That concludes my Board member comments. Soup, you got anything? All righty. We do have executive session. Can I get a motion to go into executive session? While we are in executive session, we will discuss or deliberate upon appointment of employment, compensation, hiring, disloyal, action dismissal, and to consult and meet with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation. So moved by Ms. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Raise your right hand. All right, we are in executive session.